This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the September 14th, 2022 Board of Commissioners Workshop. I will call this meeting to order. You would all please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the Southway Hall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the website for public access. I will call on our Township Manager, Tom Perchucci, to briefly review our public and virtual meeting rules. And since this is our first workshop with our new Township Manager, I will take the opportunity to introduce him to those who have not heard the announcement or have met him yet. Tom Perchucci began serving here at the Township with us on the 6th of September, and we're very welcoming to him. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that, I didn't have him up ready to go. I apologize.
Okay, courtesy of the floor, for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the Board President will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record, and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will then unmute your microphone, and you will then have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. For our workshop this evening, we have two items for direction and discussion. I'm going to flip them a little bit tonight and just start with the budget update. That'll be a little bit more of a brief explanation and discussion by the Board. So I will call on our Township Manager and her bender, both of you, to present on that item.
Yes, so at the Public Safety Committee meeting, the open burning ordinance was reviewed. With that, you know, I think the intent was to have John France here to... He's on his way.
So we're going to go to the budget discussion first?
Oh, okay. I apologize.
To flip them.
Got it. Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
All right, so for the budget, Herb and I wanted to give you an update as to where we are in the process for the 2023 budget. Right now, we're in the part of the process of the activity where we are reviewing the department operating and capital requests, and that is handled by the Township Manager, the department heads, and the Director of Finance, as well as Herb in his role as Director of Operations. So we are... There's good news here. We're on pace to complete the budget on time currently. And going through with the rest of the year, we wanted to apprise you that we are changing the timeframe when the approval of the resolutions for the fees and taxes are... I'm sorry, for the fees are done. We will handle that at the first meeting in January, where the scheduled fees will be adopted. The resolution for taxes will still be handled at the December 1st Wednesday of the month meeting. The other change to the schedule is, instead of adopting the budget at the first Wednesday meeting, we will be adopting it at the second Wednesday meeting in December. So that would be December 21st. So all of the relevant advertisements and work associated with preparing the budget will be done in time for that December 21st adoption. Are there any questions on that matter?
No questions from me. Are there any from the Board? Any from the public?
The only thing I had a question was from the Board is, do you want us to look to come in with a balanced budget? I know there was talk of maybe drawing down the fund balance policy a little bit because of how high it is. So we were just looking at some of that direction to see what your feel was. Do you want us to come in with the balance? Or do you want us to come in a little bit over and use some of it in the fund balance policy into some projects that we do have lined up for this year? Or I didn't know if there was any feedback that the Board would want to give us to that?
Well, I guess I have two questions, Herb and Tom. When will we get a draft of the budget?
We will meet with you the second week of October at the workshop. It will be Workshop to Review Proposed Operating Budget.
We'll actually see a copy of it, not just...
Yeah, we will start presenting that to you. We're actually looking to review... Ah, sorry. Workshop to Review Proposed Operating Budget. And we're also looking to possibly combine that October 3rd week meeting with Workshop to Review Proposed Capital Budget. We're looking to probably present this maybe as all-in-one and eliminate one of these steps.
Okay. So my opinion, to answer your question, yes, a balanced budget. I mean, I think that we should always have that. Coming from the School Board, we're required to have a balanced budget. Correct. So I think that we should have it, certainly in a Township also. I would hold my thought personally back on using fund balance until I see a copy of the budget. Because depending on where are you going to come in for the residents and the taxpayers, before I would say that we want to take fund balance. Now, I know you said it's good and it's healthy, and we probably do need to draw down some for capital projects because there are certainly enough capital projects within the Township that the longer they're delayed, the more it's going to cost us probably.
Yeah, because...
So we don't want that, you know?
Yep. The other thing we have to take in account here besides the fund balance policy is we got to remember, we have that bond money that is labeled capital projects, which now we know are where's damn project price. So we have to use 85% of those funds within three years. So we could look at that money also and maybe not touch the fund balance. There is options out there for us. Like I said, I was just trying to get a feel for which way we would like to go.
Well, certainly, I think that's important, we use that because we have to. And there's a finite date that says we've got to have it used by X time, three years. So we certainly don't want to be that in jeopardy. But as far as other projects, when I think you present to us, you and Tom, other capital needs that are pressing, then if the money from our... Is not available, or not, then maybe that's when we could draw down some of the fund balance.
Okay.
Again, it gets back to, I hate to see something be delayed and cost us more because we put it off. You know? And then in turn, that goes back to the Township as a whole and costs all of us money indirectly. So that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I concur. And I think one of the things that might be helpful is to see a list of the capital projects in priority of the leadership and the department heads. I agree, balanced budget should always be our goal. And then maybe overlay that on the side with, we also have this, and how do we meld the two of those?
And that was what our structure was going to be. We were just trying to get a feel for it tonight, the which way we were going to go, and that's all. But we were going to basically come with a balanced budget, but we wanted to see the feel of the fund balance, what it was. Because I know it was put out there in some prior meetings that maybe we would want to draw that down a little bit. And we just want to be prepared to have everything you guys want when we sit down to meet to go over this.
And when is the second week of October the first time the Board will have a meeting regarding the budget? Is there a schedule drafted?
Yes.
Yes, the schedule was sent out to everyone. We're following the same one Scott had out.
Oh, okay.
Because we were using it as a timetable for us. Even when I was the interim, and he left, me and Trish stayed with this schedule to try to keep it moving.
Thank you for confirming that.
And the first public reading of the budget would be at the first Wednesday November meeting. And then you have 20... You have to advertise the budget for 20 days prior to adoption. So we're well on target to meet those dates.
Excellent. Thank you.
Is it why you're moving it back to the adoption of the second meeting in December? I think would still be well within, which is fine. I have no problem.
Well, that is typically when we have always did the adoption at the second meeting.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
That's when it was always done.
It gives everybody the time. I did have another thought on that fund balance. It'll come to me. I just... It escaped me for a minute.
I have a comment. We should have a balanced budget.
Okay.
You've said it emphatically during the last budget cycle. So I still have the same viewpoint on that.
Okay.
And I'm not absolutely sure about this, but it seems to me like the fund balance can be used to help balance the budget. I think that's the case, but...
Yeah, so really, if you use your fund balance to help balance the budget, it's still a balanced budget. But I think what we're looking for is, do you want us to... We want a direction from the Board as to whether the concept of the balanced budget would include using any portion of reserves. So from your comment, Mike, and the other comments, do you view a balanced budget as not using any reserves whatsoever? Or using reserves in capital for capital expenses? But the operating budget should be based on the actual revenues anticipated to come into the fiscal year during 2023? Or do you view it as a portion of using the actual revenues as well as tapping into the reserves where needed?
I think we definitely need to see, whatever is prepared on paper, so we can give an exact answer to your question, Tom.
Okay.
But in principle...
That's all we're looking for right now.
In principle, given that the fund balance, whatever the right terminology is, is sitting at 42%, and our new fund balance policy says we need to have between 20 and 30%, I think it's reasonable to consider using that money to help balance the budget. Now, if we were sitting with a reserve of 20%, which is the floor, then that wouldn't be the case.
Right. Okay. I think that gives us the direction, what we need to get to the next step here. And we'll prepare accordingly and adhere to the timeframe.
Just a comment on what Mike is saying. I mean, certainly, we want a balanced budget. We'd be beating that to death. But if we have to use fund balance to balance it, we would. But however, I prefer not to. I mean, obviously, we could use it for other projects. I know that Herb, in your short interim Township Manager position, you did present to the department heads, or you didn't present, but you asked for a reduction in their budget coming in for next year.
Correct.
So I'm looking at it, and again, not having all the numbers, with personnel moves that have been mentioned by the two of you, with retirements, resignations in departments, you know? It would seem to me, along with your comments of the 10%, that our revenue should not exceed... Should exceed our expenses possibly. However, I also realize we're in a tough situation economically, not just Southway Hall, but, you know, countrywide, worldwide, you know, with inflationary numbers and things like that. We saw the numbers yesterday. We saw what it did to the market. So until I see the numbers, it's going to be difficult to say that. But I would love to be able to balance a budget with you guys and not have to take dollars from fund balance.
And...
So, but I know it could be difficult. I mean...
And I might have phrased it wrong. I wasn't looking to try to use fund balance to balance the budget.
Oh, I understand that.
I was looking is, did we want to do more projects to bring that down? That's what I meant by that.
Yeah, I knew that.
And I think to many of the comments made here tonight, as a Commissioner, for me, it would be important to see where we are without the capital projects funding-wise. What does it take to run the Township? And what is our revenue against that? And that should be our baseline to decide certainly the health of the Township and other areas we need to look at before we build in capital requests.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any from the public regarding our budget process? Thank you very much. Moving on then to our second item for direction and discussion this evening.
There's a comment from Monica, and she said she'd like to see a balanced budget using the operating budget.
Very good. Thank you for your comment, Commissioner Hodges. Moving on to our second item for direction and discussion this evening is the open burn ordinance. And I will call on our Fire Marshal and Building Code official, John France, as well as our Code Enforcement Program Manager, Tom Harper, to please present for discussion this evening.
Thank you. As I appeared before the Board previously when we adopted the construction code ordinances, I had made the comment that the fire code ordinance had to be rethought because we were made aware that what we had done to adopt the current fire code, the 2015 fire code, had made our previous open burning ordinances that had been in the book since at least the 1960s invalid and no longer could be enforced. So I went back and I did some research, and I did some thinking about what to do with the fire code. And I approached you folks, and you basically, Commissioners, came back and said to provide some options for some discussion. Done, prepared that here for tonight. This issue does affect us adopting the 2018 International Fire Code. Everything else that's in that fire code that we do normally, like we did with the construction codes, is just carryover, new code to new code. No substantive changes, just changes in numbering and things like that. What I've done is I've proposed two separate directions in to deal with open burning. Now, I will say that previously, and since the 1960s, and actually Barry Search of Public Safety Commission had made a comment on this, and my father was a very good resource for this also, that our existing open burning ordinance that was in effect since the 1960s appears to have been dated back to when garbage collection and/or leaf collection started in the Township. Barry would point out, and as I remember as a kid, there was a lot of leaf burning and a lot of burn barrels in the Township back when I was a kid. What that basically did was it prohibited, really, to sum it up, the burning of anything that uses wood as a fuel. Things that involve natural gas, propane, charcoal were permitted. And even fires that used wood as a fuel for preparation of food were not permitted. That was, to sum up, that's basically what we were under. International Fire Code is quite different. It allows open burning in many different facets. So I've basically proposed a rewrite of Section 907, Open Burning Recreational Fires and Portable Outdoor Fireplaces. Two options. One, rewriting it to basically keep it as it is now, where wood may not be used as a fuel. Natural gas, propane, charcoal could. I will do this caveat, though. Outdoor preparation of food. For instance, are you familiar with the Traeger grill systems? They use wood pellets as a fuel. That's a commercially-made cooking system designed for cooking. I personally don't see anything wrong with that, but that is in a separate section of the code, and that would be permitted. However, bonfires where you're just roasting a hot dog or marshmallows using wood as a fuel would not be. But that is one proposal in my rewrite. The second proposal that I'm putting forward for your consideration would be to allow the use of portable outdoor fireplaces that would burn wood as a fuel. It could also burn natural gas. While it wouldn't be portable if they burn natural gas, but propane could be a fuel for those. And limiting all other forms of open burning. My thought process in that is we are making a step forward to allow open burning. And I'm hoping these fireplaces, portable outdoor fireplaces, are very prevalent at home improvement stores. They're all over the Township, actually, as we sit now. But by utilizing that, I'm hoping that it limits the size of the fires, limits the size of the amount of wood that's burned, thereby hopefully, again, taking a step forward. We'll see how it goes. There are distance requirements, safety requirements away from a house, and that would also take away from people using burn barrels. And regardless of, even if we don't rewrite this and allow all forms of open burning, including bonfires and other fires, you can't burn trade materials, construction materials, garbage, things of that nature. I haven't been very specific. Questions might you have for me?
How do you define portable?
A good question. It is not defined. I would say capable of being moved around. So that is to say that if you build a fire ring material, that would not be portable. You had to bear with me there, Commissioner, because I was looking to see if it was defined in the definition section. I did not believe it was.
And does it define this...
Oh, no, wait. It is. I apologize. It is. Now, let me give you the definition. Portable outdoor solid-fuel burning fireplace that may be constructed of steel, concrete, clay, or other non-combustible material. A portable outdoor fireplace may be open in design or may be equipped with a small hearth opening and a short chimney or chimney opening in the top. Feel free to have questions about that.
And the definition does not speak to size of the portable unit?
No, but from my experience, these do not get very large. Portable-wise, probably the...
So you stay with the portable of your first go-around of being able to move it?
Correct.
Okay.
So, and look, and it's perfectly fine if you want to also allow for for a permanent outdoor sort of containment area. I'm not going to call it a fireplace. You want to consider that by all means. And this was just my first thought to move forward from what we had been doing. I'm very much open to your suggestions and your opinions.
I think the opposite, John. Personally, I'm more concerned about your opinions.
Yeah.
Because you're a Fire Marshal. I'm a retired salesman in printing, okay? Although I'm a Commissioner. But I rely on... I had the opportunity to meet with Tom the other day, and one thing I made a comment to him was, I can... I only believe in facts.
Yes.
That's all I can deal with, is facts. So, and that's where I have the expertise. And Monday night, we were fortunate enough to hear from the Fire Commissioners of the Fire Chiefs.
Fire Chiefs, correct.
At Public Safety and yourself. So thanks.
Now, even if we were to keep the definition of a recreational fire, to answer your question, we're talking three feet in diameter and two feet in height.
When you gave the definition earlier, you mentioned the word chimney.
Yes.
So I've seen these portable...
I believe...
I mean, I know what they are.
I believe the chimney and the small hearth opening is related to something that is a chimenea, resembles a chimenea.
Right.
To me, when I hear that... Thank you. I even have it on...
You have a fire to go to?
That was Siri.
Oh.
My apologies. I even have it on silent.
She's always listening.
My gosh.
She wants to speak.
Should we hear what she has to say? I don't know. My gosh.
Like turning off Alexa. God. No, you were the chimenecks with the chimney.
Small hearth opening.
Yeah, the hearth opening with a chimney attached to it. So that's what I believe when I read that. That's what I believe it's referring to. Commonly, that's the thing that I can think of that resembles that.
Because the portable, as you said, the Home Depots and Lowe's of the world are selling these portable fire pits. I've never seen them with chimneys.
No, I haven't either.
Yeah.
The chimeneas I have.
Right, right.
And, yeah. Again, that's what I'm thinking. You said Monica had a question?
Monica?
Can you hear me? Yes, we can hear you. Okay, great. No, I think John answered my question because I was going to ask, is example of the portable chimney, is it a chimenea? And I believe he answered that. And are you saying, John, that those portable fireplaces are permitted, and the burn of wood in those portable fireplaces would be permitted? They're just going to be limited because of their capacity? Is that correct?
Yes. And the second option that I presented. Again, the first option would be leaving it basically pretty much as it was. And with the other option moving forward, yes.
Okay, John, another quick question is, how many complaints overall have we getting about burning wood? Is it in one area of the Township? Is Township wide? And how do our fire departments feel about it?
Okay, I'll take the first question. How many complaints do we get? There are specific areas that we get more complaints than others. I'd like to be more specific, but it honestly depends, and it depends honestly on who's burning what at the time. The fire departments, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioners Kelly and Kennedy. And I concur with their feelings. Honestly, we have more problems with people improperly disposing of embers and wood from house fireplaces than we have had from any outdoor burning. I don't believe they are opposed to allowing additional outdoor burning. Is that correct? Is that what you gathered from their comments?
Yes, I asked them the question at Public Safety, what were the statistics on responses to Township fires that might have been caused from fire pits? And they said it was zero. That actually, it was responses to fireplace embers improperly disposed of that had resulted in many calls for them in response as far as their history in the Township.
And in fairness, we did have one fire this year from wood from a fire pit that was put up against a garage that burned the side of the garage. But we also had a fire this year that started in one of our garbage totes from the improper disposal of indoor fireplace wood material. So to far, far, far more, over the 27 years that I've been doing the investigations, do we get the improper disposal of materials from a house fireplace, if you will, than any outdoor burning?
Tom, would you concur? I know you would also get calls on complaints from the...
Can you just speak into the microphone? Otherwise, the people that are online... He's turning on. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that is true. Basically, the calls that I'm getting are smoke-related calls. And then I refer those to John or Chris, and they go out and investigate what's going on there as far as the fires. as far as the fires. But, yeah, most of them have been smoke-related.
So, either one, I don't care. I'm just reiterating what I heard on Monday at Public Safety. Liking it or not, okay, the smoke is, is, or the fire ordinance and codes and all this is not a quality-of-life issue. Maybe you could address that, John.
That is correct. Yeah, what I said, and I probably should have said that here, I apologize. To preface it by saying that the fire code, really any of the construction codes, for instance, are, are not for equality of life, and especially the fire code, it's for life safety. It's not a quality-of-life issue. Even in, in the, if we did nothing to the open burning section and allowed everything that would be permitted here, there's, there's nothing really that deals with smoke. It deals with an unsafe situation. If you find an unsafe situation, which doesn't necessarily mean the odor of smoke through a neighborhood.
In that vein, unsafe situation, if a call were to come in and you went to a dwelling and there was a fire pit positioned in such a place where it could be a danger, that we have the authority right now under that code to just changes to make it safe?
Yes. I should also point out that one thing I did change with the portable outdoor fireplaces, believe it or not, there's an exception in the code for distance requirements from a building. There's an exception that brings it to zero for single-family dwellings. I don't understand that personally. I, I don't get it. So, my proposal is to take that out and take it to the 15 feet that is otherwise required. I, I have, please don't ask me why that's in there. I, I have no clue. I'm, it's got to be a reason, but I can't figure it out.
Is there, does the language speak to distance for a dwelling other than a single family?
That would be 15 feet. For a portable outdoor fireplace, yes.
Specifically, it does say 15 feet.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm removing the exception that would bring it down to zero.
Okay, so across the board, it would be 15 feet.
Correct. And, and I don't, I like consistency also. Consistency also brings ease of enforcement and ease of understanding.
I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
So, the first one, John, could you simply repeat what you said at the beginning? Initially, here, my entire focus is on materials.
Yes.
Not, not the size of the apparatus.
Okay.
Whether it's available at Home Depot or not.
Right.
Just materials. I, I thought I, I thought I heard you mention certain materials may be burned, and could you just say again what they are? I wrote four materials down.
Well, regardless of, of the either rewrite, anything that uses natural gas, propane, or charcoal as a fuel would be permitted and had been permitted under our old ordinance. Burning of wood was the thing that was not permitted, regardless of whether it was for outdoor preparation of food. And with the new 2018 fire code, the outdoor preparation of food, again, I use the Traeger products, I'm sorry to drop the brand name there, I don't have one, no, oh, nothing to them, but that's a wood pellet stove. I have seen those, and they burn very cleanly and not with smoke. But even a, even a smoker that someone uses to smoke meats would be permitted, because that, at least in part, uses wood as a fuel. But the outdoor preparation of food in this code is separate, and that would be permitted.
Okay.
So, and regardless of fuel type, obviously, a barbecue grill that uses propane is permitted.
Right. So, as far as materials go, wood is permitted?
Yes, and when I say wood, again, I will caveat that with no construction debris, especially construction debris. Pressure-treated wood is, is not good. Significant problems in the smoke created by that, as there is with garbage.
Well, that, that was going to be the second half of this question.
Yes.
What's the list of items that are not permitted? And it would, I guess my thought is, it would be good to have a long list, so that it's documented and there in front of everybody.
It does, it doesn't do that. Materials other than rubbish, where the fuel is burned, da-da-da-da-da-da. So, it talks about rubbish.
So, what are your thoughts, or maybe some of the committee members' thoughts, on stating in writing that certain specific materials are not allowed to be burned? And make it as long a list as is appropriate for proper codification and communication to everyone in the township?
I don't like to get specific like that, because when you do, I find you leave out more things than you realize than you actually. And there, there does have to be a point where the judgment of someone enforcing it does come into play.
To be handled as wood, charcoal, propane, natural gas are permitted, no other materials are permitted, I mean, it could be handled in a short emphatic statement.
I, isn't that covered in burning materials other than rubbish? And, and it goes with the design of the system? I...
But could you clarify? You've mentioned rubbish a couple times, so...
I can't, because it's not defined. I, I, I can't give you a code definition of that. Oh, actually, I can. Never mind. Combustible and non-combustible waste material, including residue from the burning of coal, wood, coke, or other combustible material, paper, rags, cartons, tin cans, metals, mineral matter, glass crockery, dust, and discarded refrigerators, and heating, cooking, and incineration-type appliances.
That is the definition of rubbish?
Of rubbish. And then, in parentheses, trash.
So, trash.
Rubbish.
Trash.
Parenthesis, comma, parentheses, trash.
Trash could be broad, right? Trash could be a newspaper.
Paper is in here.
Right, so it could, it could be paper, it could be a piece of plastic, could be a tin can, but it could be a mattress.
I would look at, in that case, I would look at the definition in Webster's, which I do not have with me, about what rubbish and trash is, and I think I would have no problem going to court if I had to say that someone could not burn a mattress.
Okay. So, I've tried to draw out what's not permitted. Having had this discussion now, do you think the words in the code are satisfactory to prohibit the burning of all materials except for wood, charcoal, propane, and natural gases?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I believe a reasonable person doing enforcement can look at materials and determine that they do not meet the definition of what can be burned, and I believe it could be easily explained if it went to court. And why I say that is, I hate to say this, but it is exactly true. When I'm in code enforcement for all these years, I really live my life of, how am I going to look and how is a township going to look if I ever get called to court for something? Because that's where the rubber meets the road. And we can't burn rubber, by the way.
Okay. I have one other, I'll say one question, but it goes in a different direction. I'll preface it by saying, I appreciate everything that everyone present here has done on this subject, and part of that has been done in committee meetings. As a general statement for the township, so for Tom and Herb and all to consider, maybe, maybe directionally, the, the board would benefit by receiving committee meeting minutes. So, let's just take one. Public Safety Committee, they do an extraordinary job, you know, with drawing upon everybody's knowledge and experience in there. I do know Tom Yuzersky writes meeting minutes. I think they're available, at least upon request. That's the type of thing, I'd like the board to get a copy of all the Public Safety Committee minutes.
I actually do those minutes.
Yeah, okay.
But, but that's fine.
Okay. So, so that would be a good idea. So, what would be helpful? I, I respect everything that you've said tonight, John, and David's been on the committee. I know they have to be approved at the next meeting.
Correct.
But if we could get a summary, like, like just a summary of the meeting minutes, maybe it's draft, it hasn't been approved by the committee yet, if the board could get that prior to the, the next board meeting, which is a week from now, so we, we could just have a written summary of how the Public Safety Committee considered this issue and what the different, different positions were.
Are you okay with, and that, that is the, the extent of your focus?
Just this issue.
Okay. Would it be okay if I prepared an email summarizing those requirements, or requirements, those statements and their thoughts? Email it to Chairman Yuzersky, have him look it over, make sure that he believes that I've accurately reflected what was said, and then distribute that to you? Would, would that be acceptable? That way, it's not just me doing it. It gets a second look by the chairman, and obviously, someone that was there in the meeting.
Yeah.
Would that work okay?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
And then, so likewise, I, I, I know the Public Safety Committee first Monday of every month, so I know the cycle.
Yep. Except this month.
The, the fire committee, I, I don't know the cycle. I, I guess it's monthly, but could, could we do the same for any fire committee discussion on this subject? Because there was a notion that we had to wait for those two committees to weigh in to edify the board.
Sure. Let me ask Herb, and both of you were present, both, correct? Is there a difference between the two?
Or is the comments that were made?
Yeah. There isn't. Is there?
This week, there was.
No, no. On this issue, they're, they're...
Yeah, because we took it from the one committee and moved it to Public Safety, and the same personnel were there.
Okay, so why I bring that up is...
You wouldn't need, on this one.
Right. If I was to do that in this particular instance, I'd be doing the exact same thing.
That's fine.
Is that okay? And that's only why I bring it up.
On this issue, it would be.
That's fine.
Okay. I, I will take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I think that might be the quickest way to do it, and, and hopefully, the, the most, least accurate way, at least the most accurate way to do it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have two questions, John.
Yes.
That I want to bring up. One, when you talk about wood.
Yes.
Wet wood. Talk about that.
Does not, does not discuss it.
So, wood is, wood is wood, no matter if it's wet or not?
Yes, and I, I mean, to me, there's, well, there's also greenwood.
Yep, right, okay.
Right, which a lot of people consider to be wet wood, but you can consider wet wood to be wood that's had water in it from being outside. No, there isn't. And eventually, not so much with greenwood, but with wet wood with water, the heat from the fire will dry that out to the point where the smoke becomes less, just due to the combustion process and a pyrolysis that takes place.
Thanks. So, so my next question is to address the elephant in the room, which is not, and I know we're going to get to you. So, but I've heard for the last half hour, everything you're talking about with fire and, and, and fire pits and portable, and how do we address, I know it's not a fire issue, how do we address the smoke issue, which is really, I believe, getting to the heart of the matter?
I do not know. I honestly don't have a good, a good answer for you, because that is extremely subjective.
So, could we just say, just to tie this point down, John has already said it, right? The fire code is for life safety, not quality of life. The smoke issue is a quality-of-life issue, which is not addressed in the fire code.
Right. I would also, also point that, and I, I use this example because I'm familiar with it, there, there, there's a house that I would drive by on my way home from work for all these years, and they have a chimney, a fireplace and a chimney. And I don't know why, I don't care why, the lady and gentleman that live there would burn wood in the fireplace in the summer. I would drive by on a night like tonight, daylight tonight, and I'd be burning, but I don't know what they, they have a vineyard too, so I don't know what they do, I don't care what they do. But the point is, I can tell because I drive past and I smell the smoke. So, even the odor of smoke and the smoke produced, you know, there's no requirement that you can't use a fireplace when there's temperature inversion, weather-temperature inversion in the area. So, we even get those odors and smoke from fireplaces that are perfectly acceptable in houses, which is why I say it's subjective. Very subjective.
With your vast knowledge, and you see smoke coming out of a chimney, which you said you're smelling.
Yes.
You would know the difference between fireplace smoke and a chimney burning with an oil burner, where they're using a chimney, usually a different liner, and it could, an oil burner could smoke?
Yes.
That's, that's not a question, that's a fact, because I have one, and it, you know...
Has it happened that yours has failed in that way? Yeah.
Yeah. So, I'm just curious, when you look at that smoke and you're smelling it, it's not an oil burner that's maybe heating hot water? Because it's the summer, you said, you know, why would you...
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
Because, well, it smells like a wood fire.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted a clarification, that's all.
Okay. And I, I...
You would know that?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, I would.
I want to change tracks just a tiny bit. My question is back to the complaints the township has received. I'm just curious, and I don't need an answer tonight, if you need to research it, but to Commissioner Wilk's point, to have the information for us to review, if you could go back, either one of you or both of you, and send us an email and give us an idea of just generally the number of complaints the township has in the last two, three years on this issue? Were they a certain part of town? Just, just give us an idea, so we understand, because the old ordinance was in effect. I'm just curious, because we don't ever get that information, so I'm not aware. So, if you would email some information, just to give us a glimpse of the things that you see and hear that may be helpful to us to consider.
I can, we can try to pull, pull that together, yes.
Well, without spending a whole week, but just to give us a snapshot of...
Right. I'd say we, I can't guarantee that we will be 100% accurate, but we would give you a snapshot, correct?
Okay.
John, this just occurred to me. So, the, the fire code, you've explained, you know its purpose, and I believe it's sitting in front of you.
It is, yes.
Okay. So, it doesn't address the quality-of-life issue? If the board or township were to want to address that issue in some manner, would it be appropriate or practical to place whatever's required? You know, it might only be a few paragraphs, a few sentences, maybe even. Would it be practical to place that in that fire code document, or would it be best to make something standalone?
Guards to what type of complaint?
A quality-of-life complaint, such as the smoke issue.
Reason, I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult.
That's fine.
From what?
Well, could you restate your question? I didn't hear it.
From what? A, a smoke from what? Because as Commissioner Kennedy points out, we had that with oil burners. We've had smoke investigation, investigation called into the fire department in South Whitehall when fires were occurring elsewhere in Lehigh County. when fires were occurring elsewhere in Lehigh County. We've had smoke investigation calls get called into the Fire Department when wildfires were burning in Colorado. I'm not trying to be difficult, but just an odor of something burning is a very large gamut. You understand what I'm saying? And to my knowledge, and maybe there is, I don't know how to do it, there's no metering, no way to measure odor. If there is, we don't have it. You know, such as there is emergency lighting. We can measure the foot candles, noise ordinance, or noises, even fire alarm systems. We can measure the decibels. I don't know, which is why I say, where are you trying to get the odor from? I don't know if it's better in the Fire Code or something that's standalone.
Okay.
Those are some of my thoughts that go into it. And again, as someone that would have to, that would, that would have to take the complaint and go out and try to do something, look at it, evaluate it, and potentially do something about it.
Okay, thank you.
I believe Commissioner Hodges might have a question?
Yeah, I had a quick question. It would be interesting, John, I don't even know if it's possible, but it would be interesting to compare the complaints we have now while wood burning is out, since we changed that ordinance or updated the code, to when wood burning was not allowed. Are there still complaints at that point? Are there more complaints now with the wood burning? I would just like to see a comparison with those. Or maybe you know off the top of your head, like, oh, we didn't get anything before, but now we're getting so much because we have burning. I know that. But again, do you feel that the 15 feet from the structure, is that safe enough? Because I somehow recall five feet being, being in there, and I don't know where I'm getting that from. Is that something from an older ordinance?
Five feet, no. I don't know.
25, no?
No, I, 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 I'm not familiar with that one.
Okay, and we're talking about 15 feet from a single-family structure.
From all structures.
From all structures, okay.
From all structures.
We're on the brink of a lot of construction coming with Ridge Farm. We're going to have twins there. And, you know, it's good that we're addressing this now because we're going to have homes that are in closer proximity. In certain neighborhoods, we have homes that are in closer proximity. Then we have homes that maybe have an acre or two lot. And, you know, how can we be fair to, to everyone? It's a tough pick, it's a really thick.
Okay, so, just so you're aware, the term "single-family dwelling unit" applies to single-family detached dwellings, what you would refer to as singles. Single-family attached dwellings, which is what you would, I think you just referred to as twins. And single-family townhouse dwelling units, which are three or more units in a row. I think you know what those are. Those are all single-family dwellings, which is why, for me, taking the exception out and taking it back to residential or commercial, no matter what the use group, I shouldn't say no matter what the use group, for the purposes of this discussion with very few outliers, everything then would be 15 feet for consistency. So to address your comment, I think that's kind of what the direction I was going with my recommendation, to take the exception away and make everything 15 feet.
Okay, thank you.
As far as complaints go, I think we received more complaints when it was not permitted because somehow, and it's not, other than people that complain calling, we haven't broadcast the message that the burning ordinances has changed. I don't know, it's gotten out in the community, I do not know how.
Okay, interesting.
Did I answer all your questions?
You did, you did, and I thank you.
You're welcome.
One of the topics that came up, I think it was during Public Safety, was the question of getting a permit for burn, like Boy Scouts or the township sponsors during Christmas. We have little burn pits there for smores. Is that written into that draft as well?
Yes, it is. And I want to point out, because someone, someone had made the question about anyone that wanted to have a, do any sort of outdoor fireplace requiring a permit, that would be a monster. That is not a permit required, requirement. Now, let me address, and please make sure I answer all parts of your question. The churches that we have granted, and the Boy Scout troops that we have granted permission to in the past. Personally, as a person that enforces this code, I do not believe they have to come back before this board or if this is adopted, the Fire Code Appeals Board. Because, for instance, it's just like saying, okay, as an example, the Applebee's down at Crest Plaza does not have a fire sprinkler system in it. Why? Because it wasn't required at the time. They complied with the law that was in effect at the time. Boy Scouts, the churches, they've, they've, previously from the Board of Commissioners had approval. They've complied with the laws that were in effect at the time. Now, if you built that Applebee's, you'd have to put a fire sprinkler system in. You don't have to go, you, you can't go back. You can't go back and make someone do something in addition. So to me, enforcing this with the way that code enforcement theory works, or code enforcement works, they would be permitted to be okay to move forward. The township, I don't know what, no one talked to me about that. I don't know what was said or what was granted. But any new person could certainly, at this point, after this is approved, for whatever, whatever, whatever is in this code, not just open burning, the first recourse to seek relief from this is to go to the Fire Code Board of Appeals. Just like today with the building code, we had an appeal on stair risers, stair riser treads. That had to go to the Building Code Board of Appeals. That is, that would be the avenue that would go into effect. And they could require permits, and that's what we've done in the past. I required the churches, the schools, okay, you're not supposed to do this, but you were given approval to do so. Please come in and get a Fire Code permit. The fees, whatever, for organizations like that, if you waive the fees, that's your decision. That's done. And then at that point, I would work with those organizations, and I do work with those organizations. I will tell them, okay, when you want to burn, give me a call, we can advance. I talk to them, but we look at the fire safety danger. We talk about what they want to do, even though I know what they want to do because they do the same thing over and over again. And I will email the fire chiefs, I will email the patrol lieutenant, and I will email Lehigh County Comm Center to make sure that if someone calls it in, they know that it's a permitted burn.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Same would be for the township. If there's an event going on at Cover Bridge Park, same thing would go into effect. I would do, do the same thing.
And just so everyone knows, John, I did speak to Mike Cookett today about the fire pits. Excuse me. We will be applying for those permits and doing the right process going forward. So we know we don't have enough time for Fall Fest and that, so we will not have the burn pits down.
And just understand, I'm not opposed to anyone coming in seeking relief. I shouldn't say I'm, I may be opposed, depending what they want to do. When the churches came in, when the Boy Scout troops came in for what the township does down at the park, I think that's reasonable. You know, and, and if they go to appeal it, there are times that we send people to appeals boards. We, as inspectors, we really don't have an issue with what they're doing, but we can't waive what's in the code. That's what the appeals board is for. So we will go to that appeals board and that appeals hearing and say, look, you really have no statement other than it doesn't apply to the code. We have no problem with this. So, so understand that. It's not like I'm going to go and fight tooth and nail against something like that. At the same time, as an example, Building Code Appeals, if it's life safety, expect me to get involved. If someone came in and wanted to do this immense fire and, you know, next to the convalescent home, I'm probably going to say no.
And I just, on that topic, John, of getting the permit.
Yes.
So say the Boy Scouts and them, they have a program, and we all know they make that cobbler and those things where it's very good. That's why I'm bringing this.
They usually use charcoal for that anyway, but that's okay.
Yes, but if they do that and say they know they're going to do it five times out of the year, is it something they can put on their permit for all their dates and only have to go to the appeal board one time, or?
To me, as far as I'm concerned, when we issue a permit, there's no need to make someone come back every time they, for instance, if they put on two times a year and they want to do five times a year. I, the way I've worked the permits in the past is, for those permits, it's kind of open-ended.
Okay.
You have a permit, you have approval, just, and you don't have to necessarily put down when you're going to do it, and if you do and you change your mind, I don't care. But just follow this process every time, and they've been good about it, you know? I'll get phone calls, hey, we were going to burn this weekend again. Okay, I'll, usually a new person, I'll go through the requirements with them.
Okay.
You know, make sure it's done safely.
Wanted to see if they had to come back every single time and try to make this line up, or?
I would certainly make sure that the appeals, that when they take the appeal to the appeals board, that that aspect is covered. I, you know, I, because no, I don't want to put anyone through that.
Okay, thank you.
So let me try to marry two points together.
Go ahead.
And, and I realize I might seem to be commingling life safety with the quality of life issue. I'm going to try to explain this so as not to do that.
That's okay.
So, thank you for your explanation throughout the evening. We understand that is the Fire Code. We understand the proposed changes and how, how you manage it effectively. Okay, so thank you for all of that.
Welcome.
Now, we've heard from, in the past, from some residents, including Mr. and Mrs. Weiss. They've written to the board, they've come and spoken here, and I believe they'll probably speak again this evening. What I, what I would like to hear is, you know, John has explained, this is how it works. And over here, we have some issues that they'll explain again. I guess marrying together is, do all these people who are having these fires that are producing more so the quality of life issue versus a safety issue, do they all have an approved permit?
They will not be required to, even if we adopt this in any form. Because, no, they would not be required to do that. A permit would be required. Now, I should say, you know what silvicultural is? That deals with agriculture, with, with farming. Let me back up to say that in our previous ordinance, that was not permitted, and people had to appear before the board for that. That is, that is permitted, it is allowed, and it is a permit required for that. Silvicultural range or wildlife management practices, prevention or control of disease or pests. And then, and again, this is where I don't like this and why I removed it for a bonfire. I don't like bonfires because we talk size. My proposal was to remove bonfires. But those are the things that would require a permit, which I don't believe is, is what is affecting this couple. I don't believe.
Okay.
And I actually like the fact that, that now we've taken that out and we've allowed that to happen because, let's face it, that's, those are reasons. Those are good reasons. And next to the Boy Scouts, if there's people that know how to do burn safely, it's farmers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the board? Tom, Herb, anything to add? No?
And, you know, understand, I had talked with them, and I encourage them to let, to have them let you know their thoughts on things. Doing, because this isn't about me, you know, this is about you folks hearing all the issues related to it.
Thank you, John, we appreciate you directing the Weiss's and any other citizen who reaches out to keep the board informed. It's important for us to know. As the township structure, these issues are typically handled at the staff level, and the board only knows about it if a resident reaches out directly to us or if a staff member gets in touch with us, so.
I cannot as passionately state their cases. I cannot as passionately, if I just took their complaint and conveyed it to you, I can't do it as passionately as they're going to do it.
Correct.
Or as accurately.
If there are no other board comments, did you want to comment this evening?
Good.
You've come to the microphone, make sure it's turned on, and then just please state your name and address for the record.
Robert Weiss, 2042 Whitehall Avenue. I'd like to start off by thanking the board for allowing me to speak. The other times I've spoken, and again this evening, there's a lot that was said. And first thing, now, the Fire Department had mentioned this Monday about they got more calls over the years with people disposing of fireplace residue and causing fires. Do you think maybe they didn't get the calls from other reasons because burning wasn't allowed?
I don't under.
Well, they didn't get.
I don't quite understand the question.
Well, they didn't get the, they didn't get complaints because there was no open burning allowed.
We did.
So therefore, mostly, the fireplace would, the complaints would come from improper disposal of fireplace ash.
I don't believe they were, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe they were referring to complaints. I believe they were referring to fires that caused property damage.
Okay, but still.
That, that's what I think.
But still, there was no burning allowed, so clearly.
But it was happening.
I know it was happening. I can tell you that is a fact because the burn barrel I mentioned the other night has been there as long as we've lived there, and they burn every leaf, every year. They burn leaves or some kind of rubbish in the darn thing. So of course, it's been allowed, people got away with it, but it was never actually allowed until recently, when this was amended. You mentioned about wood, the definition of wood and, to Mr. Wilk's point, rubbish and garbage. We copied this from the South Whitehall website. 126-2, definitions. This was adopted in 1965, amended in 1990, and again, in its entirety in 2012. Rubbish, solids, not considered to be highly flammable or explosive, including, but not limited to, rags, old clothes, leather, rubber, carpets, wood, paper, ashes, tree branches, tree leaves, crockery, masonry, and other similar materials, trade waste, all solid or liquid material, including rubbish, which goes back to the wood. So there is a definition, and it was on the township's website.
Is that in the open, the old open burning ordinance?
Absolutely.
And again.
It's been.
Burning ordinance, 126-1.
We've been informed by the solicitor that that cannot legally be.
I understand that. But the, the question from Mr. Wilk was, was there a definition for rubbish?
There was.
And there was.
And there is, and I corrected myself and read that.
Correct.
So your other, your original proposal was to basically reinstate the one that was just keep it as it was.
For purposes, for all purposes, yes.
So then, that would be included in that?
It would be included in either definition, in either path. It's in the definition section in chapter two in the Fire Code, what I read. Which is the code, which is the first place I would go to define rubbish because I would be using the open burning provisions of the Fire Code. I first go to the Fire Code. Then, as I said, after that, or at some point when the Fire Code, when there's then definitions that aren't defined in the Fire Code, I then go to Webster. Or another competitor.
And so you're, so you're also including wood to be, by saying wood pellets, you're saying, well, they just cut down their tree so they could burn that because that's considered wood along with wood pellets.
Believe that would be permitted, correct?
And that, that's the problem. See, see, the problem we're having here is the open burning. And the open burning is a problem. You're also including the smoke to mean people burning in their homes and their fireplaces or from their chimneys that where they're creating heat in the wintertime. We don't have a problem with that. If someone's in their home, burning their fireplace or their wood burner for the ambiance or for heat in the winter, that's fine. I mean, like you just mentioned before, the, you mentioned it the other night.
Yes.
The inversions, that happens. That's a natural occurrence. But the open burning in the backyard is not a natural occurrence. And that's where we're having our issues. And as far as, I, I told you about, I mentioned this the other night with you. The limited. And as far as, I, I told you about, I mentioned this the other night with you, the limiting of the fire pits. Now, these, the one household, it was an apartment, and they were young adults, males, and the size of the pit didn't matter, because they were throwing in large wood, you know, four and five inches in diameter, in fact, the pile is still there, if you would like to go down and look at it, the pile is still there from when they were burning it, and they would just keep feeding it. It didn't matter whether it was five feet long or six feet long, sure, it overhung the darn thing, but as it burned down, they broke it and threw it into the middle again. So, and this is same with, with limiting what, what can be thrown in there. You're saying, okay, well, we're not going to allow plastics or this thing, nobody's going to be standing there watching anybody to see what they're throwing in that fire pit. Okay. Oh, gosh, the mattress fell in the fire pit, jeez, you know? My tax, my old tax forms fell in the fire pit, now that happens, plastic bottles fell in the fire pit. You can drive around the township, any day they have to pick up, on Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday, and how many times you'll see the really thick, heavy cardboard boxes that people are basically too lazy to cut up? They'll be laying there because they don't get out of the truck to pick that stuff up. Now, I don't think that's a far stretch to think, okay, that's going to end up in the fire pit. There again, I could be wrong, but I think on the side of, erring on the side of caution, and it shouldn't be allowed, because there's no way, nobody's going to be able to see what people are burning. You're going to say, okay, burning is now allowed, and basically, you could burn anything you want, because nobody's going to be standing there watching you throwing whatever you want to throw into that fire pit, regardless of the size. That's just my opinion, I know it's only my opinion, and I know if anybody, whether it's anybody here or anybody else, and I, and I know for a fact, too, the people that do burn, when somebody down or upwind of them are burning, they don't like the smoke themselves, but they have no problem building their own fire and letting the people downwind of them, it's like, well, that's their problem. And, and it's residential neighborhoods. It's not people with one acre properties or two acre properties, it's residential neighborhoods. And when you get into the colonial properties there, or the new Ridge Farms development, everybody and their brother can have a fire pit, 15 away, 15 feet away from the back door. Again, who's going to be standing there watching what the heck they're throwing in the darn I guess I said enough. I thank again, I thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Or any other comments from the public? Please come up and give your name and address. Is the little green light on there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, name and address.
Catherine Galca Weiss, 2042 Whitehall Avenue, and like I said, it's good to see you all again. I did a little research, and I assume this is still in effect, but I'm not sure now. It's called 148 dot one, conduct in the township code. Activity or condition against the public welfare, and I'm just going to, just read a little excerpts of it. Such activity, existence of a condition, is offensive to the health, safety, comfort of the inhabitants of the township, including, but not limited to the following, and then it listed quite a few things about noise, uh, any, uh, oystrous activity, swearing, not listening to the police, that was one in there. So I think maybe that partially goes to quality of life, I would ask you to think about that, and I hope that conduct is still in effect. And I would, would like to add, if you do approve sunburning, and you go with the 15-foot option, I would like to say, please include from the property line, not just from a structure, because you could put it right up against your neighbor's property line, and they have no recourse to that. I did find an interesting, appropriate quote, it's from, I believe it was 19th century American judicial philosopher said, "Your freedom ends when my nose begins." It had nothing to do with smell, it had to do with a fight, but I think that still applies here. So I would like to sit on my porch, enjoying clean air and watch the lightning bugs, can't always do that. I would like to open my windows and enjoy clean, cool air, maybe at least after 10:00 PM. And I would like you to reinstate the 1965, 1990 ordinance banning open burning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments in the public? Sure, if you please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Marie North, 3025 Victoria Lane. I was listening to the Board of Commissioners meeting where the Weiss's spoke, I think that was a few weeks ago, and I understand their concern about smoke, and they did bring up some important considerations, that probably doesn't have to do with what John Francis is talking about. So I don't know where that goes in, or where that should be placed in our ordinances where it does come to quality of life, but I know the EPA has made several comments about particulates in the air from a smoke, and how it affects people with asthma, and just in general, all of our health, and that's been going on for quite a while, the EPA has that information. So they are correct in, from what I can determine, in the research I did, they are correct in their concern about that. The other thing that I would mention, and again, I don't know that this has to do with safety, but people burning green wood, wood that is not seasoned, is probably, I'm going to say, I haven't been to their home, I don't know for sure, but I do know from the wood burning that we do, green wood creates smoke, you know, there's a lot of moisture in that wood, and it is not combusting the way it should. So I don't know how you address that, or how do you address people who have brush in their yard and think, okay, I'll throw that in the fire pit, you know, or those types of things, that I do think create the problem that they're talking about, or could, or could create that problem, when you have a lot of smoke. I don't know what the answer is to that, but I did want to make my own comments about it. I know at the Board of Commissioners meeting, I missed, I think Mr. Weiss mentioned something about smores, and it's interesting to me, because that is a very enjoyable thing for families. My child doesn't live at my house anymore, she's grown, but my husband and I do that occasionally, because we do, we do burn wood charcoal, and we do have, we have a wooded property, as some of you know, so we have a lot of wood, but we burn with season wood. So there are pluses and minuses to some of this, and I'm not quite sure how you'll address it, but I do understand what they're talking about with their quality of life. I certainly wouldn't want to have that every night, you know, have to smell smoke, and there are health issues associated with it, so just, just my comments for you to consider.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Anything online? Sure.
And I just have a quick question, something Mrs. Weiss brought. In the fire burning, are there any, is there any time factor?
No, are you talking about after a certain amount, certain hour?
Correct. Okay.
If there are no other comments or questions at this time, we'll go on to, if there are any non-agenda items that the board would like to bring up at this time. Hearing and seeing none, we will go to Agenda Item Six, courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone present who has any comments on any non-agenda items this evening? Hearing and seeing none, there are no executives, executive sessions this evening, I need a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, this motion is adjourned, thank you.